Good evening and welcome. We'd like to get the meeting rolling here. This portion is our organizational. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. However, there is time provided for public participation during the meeting as indicated herein by law 0165.1B. Should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study it and ask questions, et cetera. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Carlo?
Here.
Mr. Leidig?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Guests and participants are asked to silence their cell phones and put them away for the declaration of meeting. Are there any questions as far as viewing the details of the agenda? All right, I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
That moves us to number four, the election of the president. I will nominate Tammy. Let me get a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
On to five, the election of the vice president. Can I get nominations, please?
I would like to nominate Mr. Leidig.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
That brings us to six committee assignments. Policy committee last year was Tammy and Marlene.
I'll do it again.
Okay.
Then I have to do the finance committee.
Yeah, so Finance Committee. I'll stay on it, Tammy and I. Wellness Committee last year was Marlene and Janine. Would you like to...
Yeah, I'll stay in.
Stay in, okay. Business Advisory Council was Scott along with the Legislative Liaison.
I can do those two. I'd do the Student Achievement if no one else wants to.
Okay, Student Achievement, Tammy, you did that last year.
Yeah, but there was nothing...
Okay.
Nobody ever contacted me or didn't. So I'm not exactly sure.
Do you want to...
No.
Sounds easy, I'll take it.
It was easy. Yeah. We're gonna make it our mind now.
Right, right.
The House Committee was easy too.
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah. It was easy here.
And then the Woodridge Foundation, I'll stay on there. There's... There's an "OK" on that?
No.
I think that was pretty easy. Can I get a second to confirm the committee assignments?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Time, day, and location for our regular meetings. Are there any objections to keeping it at 6:00 PM on the third Tuesday of the month, right here in the library?
Sounds good to me.
I will move 6:00 PM, Thursday, third Tuesday of the month, right here in the Woodridge High School library. Can I get a second, please?
One second.
Roll call.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Authorization for investments, can I get a motion, please?
Oh, no. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Moves us to number nine, Consent Resolution. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Brings us to 10, the official newspaper for the district. It is currently the Westside Leader.
Good with that, second?
I will move that we stay with the Westside Leader. Got a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
You don't really have another paper doing.
Other than vegan.
Yeah. You don't really have one. Just old news.
Yeah.
Recommendation, yeah. Number 11, recommendations, advance of local taxes. I will move...
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
And that brings us to adjournment. We'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
You're right.
Okay, we welcome you again to this special board meeting immediately after the organizational Guests and participants are asked to silence their cell phones and put them away. Do we have to do the roll call again?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Carlo?
Here.
Mr. Leidig?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public participation. Okay, let's move to the approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye. Superintendent's report, you're on.
What are you doing? So it's a new year, new semester, board recognition, we've got lots of stuff happening, and we are so fortunate to have you as board members. I can't say that enough. You really set the tone. The teamwork, the collaboration really sets the tone for our district's success. And on behalf of everybody, I just want to say thank you and express that gratitude for all of you. We know how lucky we are too because a lot of districts aren't fortunate because we are in Woodridge to have that relationship, so thank you for that. And I'm going to invite Mrs. Harrington, Mr. Hosford, and Mr. DiTamaso up just to share what each of the buildings did.
Well, I liked it.
Thanks, everyone. You'll see in front of you that there's a card and then there's some... I won't tell you what Mrs. Norris and her students call that popcorn, but it's very good. And then there's also from Mrs. Vineyard, she had that bun cake. So they definitely come with a number of thank yous for what you do, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And from the elementary school, we have a wide variety of handwritten colored notes and things. Some of the things that were a highlight for me, some of the students, fourth grade students from Mrs. Bartleson's class, wrote specific notes about what they're thankful for. And included were the great teachers, the lunch ladies, and also the desks. So, you know, out of the mouths of babes, but also we do really, I think, you know, kids have that honest, open thought process. You'll see the drawings, then there's notes on the back of the things from kindergarten to first grade all the way up to fifth grade. So we do appreciate you and hopefully it is conveyed through those adorable drawings. And then there's from the first grade team, some superheroes. I thought they were crowns, we were hoping, but it is just a long strip of colors and superhero capes and things like that, so.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate what everybody else said, we appreciate you guys. Like, we're so fortunate to have a group of people that get together, that collaborate, that work for us as a district, that work for our community, so we really appreciate all that you do. So inside your bag there, you have two things. One is, we like our laser cutter at the middle school, so you have a magnet for your refrigerator, whatever you'll put it on, says, "Thank you." And since we're on the theme of superheroes, our board member superheroes, we believe at the middle school that not all heroes wear capes, but we also think that everybody deserves one. So, in your bag, you have a mask and a cape, so that you can continue to be our superheroes. So if you want to, if we can get a picture later, maybe we'll have you put those on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'll share a little story. It was many, many years ago, so you're off the hook. It was many, many years ago, kids would write the letters, and a couple of them wrote them like, "Thank you for the buildings, thank you for the superintendent." And it showed a picture of superintendent sitting in his chair, sitting back with his feet up on the table, drinking a pub. I thought that was funny.
That's funny.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Well, this semester is already starting to fly by. I can't believe we're in the middle of January, and we're getting ready to kick off the portrait of a graduate work. So that first meeting's February 10th. I sent some information with details for that today. And this week, our whole admin team is making personal phone calls to the different participants to join us. So we've got a number of different people from different groups represented, and we are really excited. I can't wait to just hear the conversations and where we're going to move with our district. So lots to look forward to there. The other thing is, a lot of, a lot is happening with our legislation right now. And I'm not going to talk about all of it because we're still looking to see how it impacts our district, and as we learn more about implementation, I'll share that. But I wanted to highlight two right now. One is Senate Bill 29, and I've talked a lot about that this year. In October, we sent out our general monitoring notice, and at the time, there were some unintended consequences. It was poorly written, and people recognized that. It was unrealistic to ask districts to do what they were doing because there was so much ambiguity with the 72-hour notices. So we had to wait though because they were on recess when they came back. There was an amendment made with the substitute bill, House Bill 432. So now, the biggest change is the 72-hour notices will be sent primarily when there's a health and safety threat. What I want to say about that, though, is we're already doing that as a district. We've been doing that. So now, what our families will get if there is a situation where something like that transpires, they'll still get the same phone call conversation that they've always had with our administrators, but now they'll also get a form letter to accompany it. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there's nothing new with this legislation. So that's happening. I'll also be sending home an updated general monitoring notice that'll likely go out the end of the day on Friday. And then we should be done with Senate Bill 29, just except for like keeping up with the different mandates involved with that. The next one is a really good news one. I had shared some information with you about it last week. It's House Bill 152, also known as Madeline's Law, also known as the hearing aid bill. And this one is near and dear to me because our district audiologist, Dr. Carrie Spangler, has been involved with this for the past six years. She started working with then Representative Weinstein, now Senator Weinstein, to just advocate for this because our families were paying out-of-pocket expenses for hearing aids that were $5,000-plus dollars for replacements, for initial hearing aids, which was a real, it's a real hardship. And it was, they were classified as cosmetic, which just seems asinine because you needed that to access everyday life. They stayed at it. Carrie's been a champion for this work, a strong advocate. Senator Weinstein and Representative Russo pushed it through. It passed. They just did the ceremonial signing in Columbus last week. And we're so excited. That benefit now is extended to children 22 years and younger. And it's also the first legislative change to insurance in the past 10 years, which is even, yeah, even bigger. So it's definitely something to celebrate. There's good legislation happening, so I just wanted to, you know, just bring attention to that again. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mrs. Harrington so we can recognize some of our elementary students right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Austin. Thank you again, Board of Education. I'm so excited for the opportunity to recognize these wonderful third graders. They're all third graders. And what's tricky about being a third grader is that it's a big transition year. So you go from the primary side or the little kid's side to the big kid's side, the Boston side. And it is the expectations change, the rigor changes, there's a big standardized test, and there's a lot of pressure. So to be recognized as a third grader, we always appreciate all of our students that we're able to recognize, but this is, in my mind, especially important because these students are all being recognized as PACS leaders. And so what's important to know about PACS is that it, honestly, each of these students helps to create and maintain a positive, peaceful environment. So PACS is actually Latin for peace, and it's important because it's hard to, how do you spread peace, right? How do you share that? How do you model that? And so at the elementary school with our assistant principals, Mrs. Roman and Mrs. Varga, they ask our teachers to recommend names each month, and we put the students on the stage. And we have a special VIP table where all the PACS leaders are sort of put up in front of their peers to be held as role models. So in case they aren't sure, we remind them. But also, some of the students really are very humble. They don't feel comfortable with that. So sometimes we actually close the curtains because they're like, "We don't want to, you know, stand out too much." It's interesting, but it's important that we recognize these students. And so each of these students has been recognized at some point by their teachers as a PACS leader. And I'm going to talk a little bit specifically about each one. We did invite six, and we have four with us, which I'm so excited. And so the students that are not here, Heaven Pitts is not here, and Asher Karma Charia is not here, but who is here? So when I say your name, this is the part we all come up, okay? We practiced, we had a meeting today, we talked about it. All right, ready? Okay, so can I have Emmett Jodon, Caroline McElarney, Elliot Markort, and Amon Krano? Okay, do you want me to share what you said? Caroline promotes peace and productivity. Being a PACS leader involves helping to reduce disruptions and distractions in the classroom. What makes Caroline a PACS leader is that she's 100% focused on learning, staying organized, and helping classmates stay engaged in their tasks. When we met today, I asked her what she thought made her a PACS leader, and she was thinking about sharing it, but I'm going to share for her. One of the things she likes to do is to help her teacher rip out her math pages in the workbook. And she also likes to help her classmates find the pages when they're not sure where to go. So that is very outstanding. So thank you, Caroline. Very proud of you. And then, next, next, we're going to talk about Emmett. Are you, do you want to talk? Okay, so Emmett encourages others. Emmett helps his peers stay on track and make good choices. He encourages teamwork, supports classmates who may be struggling, and celebrates the success of other, others. Today, he told me that every time someone's stuck on a word or math problem, he likes to be the one to help them. Outstanding. It's a nice job, very proud of you. Okay, next is Elliot. Do you want to talk? Okay. Noticing a pattern. Okay. Elliot, she sets a positive example and shows compassion. She treats everyone with fairness and also kindness. She demonstrates good behavior, kindness, and respect for others. She says the thing that she really likes to do is help others when they have a hard time. And the reason why she, I asked her why she would do something like that, and she said is because she wants to. Makes her feel good, not because anyone makes her. Very proud of you. Nice. Are you ready? Do you want to talk? Are you sure? Okay, Amon. Amon makes responsible choices. He takes responsibility for his actions and works to make decisions that benefit both themselves and his community. He thinks about others and aims to create a peaceful and joyful environment within Mrs. McGola's classroom. Are you sure you don't want to talk? Okay. One of the things that he talked about today at school is that he really likes to help people and also to be kind to everybody. He thinks kindness is the most important thing we can do. Very proud of you. Nice job. So these are our students that we want to recognize from the elementary school.
We are so proud of you. It's so important to have leaders showing the other kids the right things to do, and we want to give you a certificate and a pin, and we're going to have our board members come up and, so that you can shake their hands and take a picture.
We're going to get a kick out of this. That's up. This is Ellen. We're going to get a kick out of this. One, two, three. All right, you guys are good. Thank you.
This is usually the part in the meeting where we take a few minutes recess because we know that you're busy and you might have other things that you wanted to do. So we are going to take a break, and you're free to leave, or you could also stay and be a part of the rest of our meeting.
Okay. Now we move on to the Treasurers' Report. Mr. Morehouse?
So a couple of things. Out of Board Appreciation Month, I also want to make sure you found your W-2 sitting there waiting for you. Financially, it's, I don't have a lot of good things to say. As you saw in the financial report, December was another not-good month, and there's always those three, November, December, and January, but it was a little better than November. So we've got things looking up for us. One of the things I've been kind of mentioning for the past couple of months is our insurance. It's just, it's not going well. We had an insurance meeting today. The claims for the entire consortium, our claims are 30% higher than they were between fiscal year '23 and '25. And it's just, it's just not, we've had a lot of claims come through. I can't say that anyone in the consortium, it's a lot of big claims, it's just a lot of volume of claims. So we were talking, and we said, you know, we took an 18% increase last year. And we've still got a few more months to go, but we talked about if, right now, if we had to set our rates for next year, we'd be looking at a 12% to 14% increase again. Yeah, and unfortunately, I only got 10 built into the forecast, so come springtime, that's going to have to be changed a little bit. But yeah, we're looking at another 12% to 14% increase. It's just, it's a struggle right now. And, you know, every insurance consortium, no matter where you do, at some point, your turn comes in the pickle barrel. In these last two years right now, it's us. Hopefully, it starts to level off. As we come into the new year now, just a couple other things. Everyone's familiar with Senator Huffman. I'm not sure if anyone saw his quotes, but as you know, we're at the end of the biennial budget, and speaking of the new biennial budget, he quoted, he was quoted, "I don't think there's a third phase to the Fair School Funding Plan," and that the clear statement I can say, I think, is those increases in spending are unsustainable. So you can see already where he's leaning, but yet, he was the driving force behind the almost billion dollars put into the voucher program last year. So you can see where he's heading with public education. We all knew it, but now he's quoting it. The last thing I will leave you, actually, some good news, not really so much for the district, but for our employees and all public employees. President Biden signed into act the Social Security Fairness Act. For anyone that's not familiar with that, anyone who, since the '70s or '80s, has worked long enough to retire under public retirement, if you've also had enough quarters to retire under Social Security, it's going to offset your Social Security. You're not going to get all Social Security that you put into it originally. Also, if you had a spouse that worked under Social Security and they passed away, and if you retired under public, that, your public pension would offset and take away the Social Security you got as a serving spouse. This takes that away. So it's, it's very nice thing he's did because every time we get a new employee, we have to sign off on a form, make sure they realize you're not going to get all your Social Security if you work long enough under a public pension. So it's nice that he signed this, so that's, the one, part of my report that I'll leave is good news is, you know, all our employees now, if they can work long enough and get those quarters in to retire under Social Security, they will get a good part of their Social Security back now.
And that's law enforcement, city workers, and everybody?
Yes, any type of public employee. Firemen, police, school, library, county employees, anybody, any public employer. President, that's all I have for you.
Hey, is recommended that the board prove the December 2024 Treasurers' Report as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Board of Education reports. Correspondence and updates. Does anyone have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, nothing? Legislative liaison.
Covered.
Hmm?
Covered.
Yeah. Committee reports. It was a slow year. Okay, let's move on to the Consent Resolution. I will move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Okay, personnel, certificated staff. We have one, two, three, four, one, four. I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
So we are losing two really great teachers at the high school. Dave has been here 35 years. I mean, his whole career has been in Woodbridge, and we knew he was going to give us one more year, and now he's going to move on to the next chapter. And then Rich Ettinger has been with us for 28 years too, and that's going to be another loss for our science department, but, you know, we're definitely excited for them and what's next. And, you know, we'll definitely keep in touch to find out what they're doing, and I'm sure they'll be around. They can't stay away from our sporting events here at Woodridge. The third item is our curriculum committee, and this is the committee that looks at resources, curriculum, talks about it, advocates for new things, makes sure that we have alignment with our curriculum resources and the standards. And then the fourth one is our internal monitoring committee, and this is the group that looks at our special education documents and just reviews them for compliance and sets goals for the future.
Anybody, any discussion? I agree, Dave and Richard, big losses. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Classified staff. We have one and two, and I'd like to do one on its own, please, except with regret, resignation of Mary Neff, Principal-Secretary for the Purpose of Retirement, effective June 30th, 2025. Big loss, big loss. And then two, add Jenna Phillips to the list of food service helper and transportation attendant substitutes to be used on an as-needed basis, and authorize the treasurer to pay her the approved substitute rate. Roll, any discussion?
Mary is going to be a tremendous loss for us. She is in the fabric of Woodridge, and I told her I was going to throw away her resignation letter, and she gave it to me, but then she emailed it too, so.
Darn email.
I know. Al's going to have a whole new world at the high school next year. And then, you know, of course, we're always happy when we have more subs to add, and so Jenna's going to be great in food services and as a transportation attendant.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
See supplemental contracts. We have three. I will move. Discussion.
Tyann really stepped up for us as an assistant tennis coach when we couldn't find anybody, and she really helped get our program in a great place. So she has a number of other things that are going on, so she's going to spend some time doing those, and that's why she's stepping down in that area. And then college knowledge is coming up. Now, that is a light list of chaperones, so you can anticipate that we're going to be bringing more to the Board in February. And then the spring musical is right around the corner, and Stephen Miller Jr., we're recommending for the pit director, the musical.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Recommendations. National Career and Technical Education Month, February 2025. It is recommended that the Board approve the proclamation declaring February 2025 as the National Career and Technical Education Month.
I'll move.
One second.
Any discussion?
We have lots to celebrate here in Woodridge, in that area. There's 29 programs in the Sixth District Compact, and that's just one area that our students are able to take advantage of that. And in January, just last week, they had the expo at Kent State University, and we had 2,000 students across the compact there, exploring the different programs. There were different student ambassadors, sharing information, engaging students. Mrs. Harrington's son was an ambassador for our entrepreneur program. That was really exciting. He was super charismatic and got people really pumped up about that program. So even though it started in January, definitely something that we can talk about during the month of February as well.
Not on that subject, but did you see the girl that was killed at Taco Bell? She, her family started a scholarship for kids in the Sixth District.
Yeah, I just saw that on Friday. Yeah, it's tragic.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Okay. The Woodridge High School Course Catalog, grades nine to 12. It's recommended the Board approve the Woodridge High School Course Catalog, grades nine to 12, for the 2025-26 school year.
Move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I was reading it, it was like Dean College again. There are so many things to choose from.
There are, there's a ton, which is great.
Yeah, it is good, yeah.
I'd like to take a couple of those courses.
Yeah, I know.
Are you allowed to do that? Seriously, are we allowed?
Come in and audit them?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to learn a little bit of that stuff.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Vasalati presented last month, and I'm excited. I'm really excited about the course that Mr. Klein's going to teach too, that has to do with social media. It'll be really good for our students to take that.
Didn't have any of that when I went to school, just saying.
Nope. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
See, the MOU. It is recommended the Board approve the attached MOU with Kent State University for college credit plus the 2025-26 academic year.
I'll move.
I'll second. Discussion.
This is the first one for next year, so they'll start coming in, and it's just our agreement to offer CCP to our students.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Finance. We have one purchase order. I will move.
One second.
Discussion.
So in the summertime, you guys passed the contract with the agreement with Northampton Bible Church to house our second preschool. We passed the agreement, but we didn't get a purchase order done, and they called us and said, "Where's our rent?" So that's, this is the rent that represents August through December. We now have things in place for January through the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Effren?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Alternative tax budget.